The more. Shields.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Walker is absent. Marty.
Present. I guess we're doing a touch of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, please rise with me.
Why allegiance to the flag of the United States of America? And to the Republic for which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, here we are with new business to discuss a city's action plan. If I can make one recommendation. That's that we make sure, you know, is a one year rec- action plan is for one year, is that correct?
There we go. Yeah, I think that's up to the to council, I would recommend probably no longer than two years forecasting out. You know, as we all know, sometimes getting a project. Started and completed in one. Year, whether that's a, you know, budget year, or I guess it's a calendar year is the same, but is is challenging, so. Forecasting out maybe two years, maybe make may make some sense, but probably not longer than a two year. Forecast.
Okay. That was the only question I had on this whole process. How long?
Hmm.
I'll turn it over to the city manager. Or did you want to be?
Oh, I was just gonna, thank you, man, I I think it's a great question, and I think. I can't even think, you know, this is a two year plan. And maybe that's because what Manager Horn had put and communicate with, but I I'm okay with that.
And again, just to. Kind of back up, we obviously went through this a little bit in September. Dove into this, this plan dates back to twenty twenty one. Some of you may or may not have been on council at that time, so. I always value. Getting the current. Getting this current body, getting your input and feedback on how you would like to proceed with. A list of priorities again over the next two year period and. It could be, we. We either eliminate a few things, we add on to a few things, we could as an option, set this thing aside. And start over. That's completely fine, we could. Move this into maybe more of a. What I would call more of a full blown strategic plan where we. Have flip charts and we we have a process that each of you can place an emphasis on. You know, a certain priority and see if there's consensus on that priority. I've seen that done a multitude of ways on how we reach consensus. So there's a number of ways that we could do this, I think the plan overall is. Is is well done, I think it's just a little too. Lengthy, in my opinion, I would like to see us, if we do use the current plan in front of us. It could be that the the actual priorities are still in play. But maybe let's fine tune some actionable. Steps that are maybe. I was just saying like five bullet points, these are the five things we want to accomplish under. Economic development, for example, over the next two year period, and maybe it's more than five, but I'm just using five as an example. Instead of going, you know, sustainability goes on for. Not, I value sustainability as well. But if we could have some really actionable, again. Let's narrow this down, let's let's. Condense it to really some actionable steps that we can take to really go after these priorities. So that those are the options, I think we can, we can. Mold the current plan. Make some amendments to it, adjust it, or we could. Set it aside and and move move forward. With a different set of priorities that this body would like to tackle over the next two years.
Right, important to look at what what our our goals have been, so. Get a better idea of what we accomplished, and see if there is some stuff we accomplished on this list. Year, year and a half or two. I'm glad you said that, because I kind of put into words what I was trying to lead to was. How long of how long is this for? Process for? The working process of it, which means if we have too many things, we're gonna get bogged down and get nothing done. I'd rather make sure we. Capture some advocates to the, could we? Stay with what we have and get one of you guys decide you want to reinvent and start over. Mr. Walker.
Sure, thanks, Mayor, so I was looking back at the previous twenty eighteen final action plan, and there were things that we had accomplished. Between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty one, when this new draft. On the action plan transpired, and those things that were accomplished were crossed off, and the things that were not accomplished. Folded over to twenty twenty one, and so I would think it would be a perhaps a similar process, and then. We also look at those things that weren't able to make it onto the twenty twenty one action plan. Is maybe those new things to add on, so I just think like systematically going through. The current action plan, checking those boxes, and then deciding as a group, okay, we we accomplished that, we we reached our most funding goal, for example. Or at least relatively close, so that's what I would propose, and that's how I kind of envisioned. Moving forward with this, and and twenty eighteen to twenty twenty one was. That was three years, but obviously you're you're planning the year previously to implementation, so. I was thinking that somewhere like between that two and four year action plan.
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you. So I got a couple of things, one is thinking back to the September session, we had some good discussion, I thought, on the action plan, and we talked about combining two of the goals. And so I didn't know if anything has been done since, and that. I understood that was a direction to staff to go and help us with the twenty twenty three plan. And Lindsay, you said twenty eighteen, I was like, it was twenty nineteen, so I started in twenty twenty, but whenever it was, there was a, I understood a formal word session, like a Saturday or something. I don't know what that was, because I was coming into office and I don't know what the prior process was.
Prior process was. Basically get a grade of how do we do on what we have? If there's if there's something to carry over, like Lindsay mentioned, we carry it over, and we may have to, we may twink it at the same time. But there are other things that we may say, that's not, we all agree, let's drop that one and move on to something more vital to us. But I think the big thing was kind of keeping it simple, yeah, because you could get. This could go on for pages.
Yeah, well, separate, separate, but that's what we said in September, so I thought less is more, and definitely measurable and actionable.
Yes, Derek.
Yeah, I concur, I I I want to just from a high level standpoint, say. I'm open to cutting and parsing, simplifying. And and that doesn't mean, I mean, from the outside, it doesn't mean if we cut something that's not important, but I think just for a a action plan item. Versus a strategic plan, this is more of the action plan.
I'm required, Mr. Moore.
So when an attorney says there's too many words.
Please make note of that.
But my thoughts looking through this, and again, you know, I wasn't involved in creating this, and you folks all were. But I I just, as an example, a high level, I was looking at, how can you merge some of these goals, so I looked at like goal one and goal two. For example, goal one, ensure a long term sustainable city budget, were required by law to do that. And if we look to priority one, it's basically talking about the same thing we're talking about in goal two. So maintenance plans, new revenue sources, et cetera, is essentially the same thing we're talking about in goal two. So even if you named goal two, ensure a long term sustainable city budget, and then just merge these and took out whatever you'd already accomplished. You know, that would go at least some distance, and I won't get into it, but that's possible to do with like goals three and six. And I think on the sustainability one, there's some common themes there, one being solar, the other being community education, so. I'm getting ahead of myself that I support the idea of trying to merge some of these and simplify. Thank you.
You're talking of one and two possibly.
Yeah, I can speak more to that, everybody can take just a look at. Point one under strategies for goal one, and then take a moment to read what the essence of goal two is. And really. To my mind, goal one belongs under goal two, even if you wanted to rename it or merge the names somehow.
These are already completed as well.
And that part, yeah, there's also that.
It's almost like we can check off that box.
I had I had crossed off goal one two in my my own analysis.
Completely.
Yes, goal one is six year. C I P, you're talking that, yeah. For the whole. The word infrastructure that pays off.
Yeah, and and this was in the effort to simplify, not that these can't be worked on.
Sounds good. You feel. Mr. Horn, do you feel infrastructure? Needs a standalone? As far as in on the action plan?
Yeah, I would think infrastructure is one that carries forward as a standalone, that is something that. Will be recurring going forward, obviously, we all, we all know the work that we're doing with undergrounding, that work will continue as we have projects that. Come forward, same with water and sewer infrastructure, how that all supports. You know, it really supports goal three, economic development with infrastructure, so. I like the concept of having infrastructure as a priority and and that remains because. That work continues each each and every budget cycle.
Yeah, and and so you're saying you would like to maintain that as one of the goals.
One.
Yeah.
But I think you you are absolutely right, that you we could easily merge those two and in under infrastructure and and place a. Strategy or. You know, a priority under that that addresses. You know, the long term budget as part of infrastructure.
Yeah, and suss out some portions like. You know, always seeking new revenue sources and those little pieces and parts that we'll always want to be. Doing to try to find money.
And the same thing, I I think that. Under under goal one, I think there 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 needs to be. Continual work done as far as considering. New revenue sources. We do a great job, and I've mentioned this. And other at other times, we do a great job of pursuing grants, but. And that's a great. Thing, and it's a great part of what we're able to accomplish, but it also slows projects down when we're. When we wait for grants, we we're waiting to hear back, we're waiting to check boxes. To be able to fund some of these projects that we have relied on grants for, I think would be a continual priority or goal. As we look forward as well.
Could we, could we do, would say infrastructure slash economic development for one one?
I I, when I looked at this, I was looking, again, I'm. Brand new to everything, but I was looking at you could merge. Goals three and six somehow, because under goal three, the highest priority strategies, you were talking about identifying properties. For redevelopment ready communities, et cetera, which falls under six, promote a portable workforce housing within the community, I don't know if that. Aligns with everybody, but that was when I was reading it, goal three and six, unless you wanted to change. The strategies. But the strategies as they exist are similar.
To me, three is.
So you're talking, okay, I see what you're talking about, you're talking about.
Three is.
Training workforce. Housing. And economic base.
I wasn't looking at titles so much as the strategies.
Well, but I think. Ultimately, I can find them easier if we talk about, to start with what what we're looking at.
You know, that that's, economic developing, economic or strengthening the economic basis, economic bringing new businesses in. And diversifying. What we do that way. Different than housing.
What? Redevelopment ready communities. Is under goal three.
That's for grants, and that's not necessarily housing, that could be.
Well, it's not an E T C, so it would follow, any kind of economic development could be housing, it could be any kind of.
Right, right.
So could goal three and six be merged somehow, maybe the reverse, where goal six was part of? Goal three, because. We need affordable workforce housing in order to strengthen the economic base, and again, maybe these are bad fits, it's just. Run out.
No, I'm following you, I think that, I think it makes sense for consolidation. I guess the question is, is like, does that, is that a good fit to consolidate economic development and and goal six?
I I think housing should stand alone. Personally, workforce, supportive housing.
Though, potentially, I mean, like, three of, four of the redevelopment ready sites would be housing. Related.
It's like a Rubik's cube.
It is.
Oh, I I don't know if we have to collapse season much as. As review what's on them and see if there's anything left to them to do something with, maybe. So we just started first one, let's see where we can. Ensuring a long term sustainable stability, sus- sustainability budget.
Everyone using the right, or the same.
I don't think so. Put it right off of what you said, me.
Me too.
Hmm, it's not strange.
It, you know, it's the same.
It's like, this was the original. Original, original. So I just wondered when you guys all discussed and make sure you're there, looking at this one, of course, the one. Shane sent you guys Friday. Because you updated a little bit of this, right?
I did.
Right, so.
Oh, therefore, so we should jump into this one.
I'm just saying, whatever one you guys are talking about, make sure you're all.
Which one are you guys working off of? I I get confused because that's twenty twenty one still, but I I think this is the easier one to work from.
Dated one, okay, this one has.
The newest one. Okay. Of course, the old one, you don't have to agree.
Let's all be on the same page.
So can we agree that, like, can we agree that the? Um, goal number one has been completed in that, um, there's an updated. Master plan for Parks and Rec, and there's also a capital improvement plan that has been completed for Parks and Rec. So does that mean that that goal is done, like, can we check that one off and like to move on to the next one?
I mean, I think though, you could say that those. Those priorities or those action items are done, but the the actual goal could still be there with new. Steps, new action over the next two years, what now, we we, like you mentioned, we did the R F Q, we have the capital needs. Assessment, so what now, what do we want to do in this category for the next two year cycle, or it could be that. As Councilmember DeMore mentioned. This is. Kind of a no brainer, even though I think it's still a a something that. We need to be very mindful of. So there could be over the next couple of years, maybe there's other things we want to move into to address this goal.
But. Manager, are you referring to like items that are currently? We don't have a budget for, like, these these wish items are in in our our budget at end of the year that we have identified funding for. So, yes, having discussions or work sessions to identify ways to address those desires or wants or needs, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I, a part of the notes that I had taken when we had our meeting in September was like, okay, goal number one. We're more more or less on the path to completing some of those things, community or C I P as well as the master plan. And so some of the notes I had here were, you know, so now that we've completed most of this, what are the next steps, and I had written down. The possibility of a millage, short term sunset ready, ready to run a millage, and then I also wrote down grants and matching grants. And then, of course. That the needs of that would also fall underneath like shoreline restoration and climate change mitigation and the bike path and the cost to replace the. The path itself, so those would be like the pieces that obviously are still not resolved yet, even though we may have accomplished the goal itself. So I don't know where that would fall into like pieces that are left over from goal number one to to be mindful of.
They're just kind of things that are moving up the ladder.
As a strategy.
So I think, I think give us some great ideas, but several of those that should probably be considered.
But once again, do those fall under long term sustainable budget, or do they fall under infrastructure? You know, because to me.
Define infrastr- infrastr- infrastructure, because. I kind of think more of. Streets, water. Uh, the hard pieces that we have in the city.
Our bike path is part of our infrastructure.
It's an infrastructure, it's a it's a hard, hard body. That we do, we maintain.
Yeah, I think, oh, well, again.
But I don't know what the word means really.
I mean, to me, it's anything that requires maintenance, anything in the city that requires maintenance. And and upkeep, and so when you're looking at this page one, you know, well, you mentioned some things like. Lindsay, that to me need to be maintained, so. I don't know, I don't, I don't see him falling under long term sustainable budget. I I'm just back to these two, I think could be merged.
I I I agree that the the merging. Of those two. Could happen.
But when you think about what its funding mechanisms as well, like D P W. Like stands on its own, it funds itself for the most part, like it doesn't require general funds. And Parks and Rec historically always to trends on the general fund budget, so to me, a more sustainable budget would be pulling less from the general fund. And you're kind of supporting yourself. Independently. Through your grants and other other means of bringing in revenue, so that whether that would be a millage or 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 grant funded, because. Infrastructure wise, like our water, our electric, our sewer, our roads, like. Harvest works. Carries their own weight, and so when I think about a sustainable budget, I look to those departments that require general funds. And I don't know if that's. If that's correct or not, or if that's the right kind of thinking. But when I think about ensuring a long term sustainable city budget, it's like, oh, we've really got to get Parks and Rec up to par. And supporting themselves and bringing in the amount of revenue that they need beyond the general fund.
But, you know, that may not be something that's. I think we need to look at other communities then, because I think. In most communities, that is, I don't do not believe a standalone supports itself totally, just sort of the, just to the inability to. Charge people to use your parks, anyways, it's a common.
Sure.
Community.
Yeah.
Sharing of this land that we have.
Well, and I think too, what's confusing to me as a new person in this is if you look at the old goal one, apologies, the old one. I mean, number one talks about. Create parks, trails, shorelines, maintenance plan, including cost estimates for repairing upkeep, consider potential new revenue sources, you know what I'm saying, so kind of what. Everybody was saying should be in number two. Under infrastructure. That's not really, that's that is looking at things like grants and other revenue sources. Or am I reading that?
And it's a carryover, so that's a carryover one to one here in twenty twenty one, which means that we didn't accomplish it then. But we're so much closer now than we were then, is the way that I kind of framed it.
No, but I was saying, based on the delineation you just made earlier, under that delineation, that would fall under goal two, not goal one. Am I making sense in what I'm saying?
I'm confused between the two formats. It's a new form, it's a new structure. I think most of us reviewed the old one, but I, to me, I like saying that the first column being action item, I'm. I think that's goal, I remember, right? You know, long term sustainable budget is is that first item. It seems to me that. Having that as a goal and then those three big objective budgets could easily. Carry over from year to year to year without much change. And maybe not much with the key, uh, team members, but. The expectation and the update would be a unique plan each year. So I I like, I like the way it's laid out, and it's much simpler than the old version.
It's true.
And 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 the that first goal, if I'm reading right, is focused around the overhaul budget. Whereas the. Economic development. I think it's one of the suggestions, should combine.
No, one and two.
Oh, what about, oh, infrastructure.
The next one.
Yeah, and there's a plenty of components to all of them, but I love kind of what Shane said around. And and what Lindsay said about looking beyond. Grants and having a goal in there, and that. That's a budgetary item, not an infrastructure item.
But there's an objective under infrastructure to pursue grant opportunities.
Just grant. So the 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 budget. Item is looking beyond grants for what else, like village or whatever else there might be.
And just another thought, it could be because. You know, if you look at the the five. Goals, if you will, you know, we mentioned downtown, which I am certainly supportive of having. Downtown as a separate goal, if you look at goal one, a lot of what's in there in the note section is. Is parks and natural resource related, maybe we transition that goal into. And I don't, just off the top of my head, I don't want to wordsmith anything, but something about enhance or ensure. Quality of our parks and natural resources as a goal, because we all value our public spaces.
And it's an objective.
An objective.
Yeah.
Maybe instead of the overall budget goal, which we all know that's certainly a priority for staff, to make sure that we're. Being responsible to our taxpayers. Maybe we transition that because we have so much work to do in that. In the parks area that we have a separate goal that's focused on parks and natural resources.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's good.
I like that. That kind of bubbles up out of the parks, but master plan is like the downtown, the core is the master plan.
And we can utilize some of the stuff that's in here. I I was telling Councilmember DeMore, I really didn't want to take any liberties with any of the language here, because this is a document that was. I believe, I obviously wasn't here in twenty one, but I think was put together by council by by and large, so. I really want this to be your document, I don't want it to be. Be anything that I'm swaying anyone on, because this is, this will be something that carries forward. Over the next couple of years, so I I really didn't want to take any. Pen or, you know, start crossing anything off without your input.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, and it's also, it's very much like kind of in step with the Libero Potaski master plan, it was that living, breathing document was inspiration for. Continuing an action plan based, you know, feeding off of the previous one, but also very much. feeding off of the previous one, but also very much centered around the Liverpool Petoskey Master Plan. So everything that's in the draft action plan is tied directly to the master plan.
Okay.
So is that enough instruction for you in terms of goal one, Shane? Is that?
I think goal one, yeah. Obviously, this will be something that we continue to massage. We'll get obviously back in front of you. We can fine tune. Um, kind of the the strategies, once we get things identified and and repositioned, if you will.
Does that mean we can officially take off the manage unfunded accrued liabilities, U A L associated with MERS because we met our goals? Is that like? Okay.
Yes.
So that feels so good. Like, I just want to cross something else.
Page two, goal one, on number item two. Any term?
Oh, it's right here on this one, though.
In the action plan, you have it under under, yeah. Under long term sustainable budgets.
Oh, yeah.
It's just an objective there and then an update.
Yep, so that's that's great.
So if you if you know of any obviously, it's hard to do this on the fly, but if you know of any strategies you'd like to consider under parks and natural resources um, that currently are not in any of this language, obviously, I'd like to and obviously, I'll I'll redline things and get it back to you for approval, but I think we can eliminate some of the verbiage in here and and make it a little more condensed and still kind of address what we need to address.
Mr. Moore.
Just to um Shane, based on like under infrastructure point two, sorry, just bumping ahead for a minute, but it says pursue grant opportunities. That's a place where it could say pursue grant and other funding opportunities since you were interested to expand beyond just grants, you know, that works there, but it's possible.
Yeah. We're done done with one right there.
I just apologize for skipping ahead, but we were talking about grants, so I didn't want to lose.
Yeah, right. No, good. Well, I was one of those under infrastructure, six year uh, C I P formulated uh, additional ten years to provide long term, that you know, that will, right now, I think we have a a hands full just taking care of a five year plan. Uh, do you guys want to start building up to ten years?
Pretty sure we do, actually.
And it gets updated every year, so it's current.
So you want them to go an additional ten years?
It's already, it's already out of ten years. Plus, I thought it was the the sixth and better.
It's the very back where it says um, projects lacking funding.
Oh, okay. I thought you wanted more, I thought that you wanted more in depth of we were going into.
Yeah, we don't, we don't go into the detail that we do those six years.
I was concerned that we were going to start going into details for the next. And that's, how can you do that?
It's more of a wish list.
Okay, gotcha. That's all I had.
Yeah.
I think that combined work session is a great idea with planning commission. And then I just think wherever we reference grants, we should also reference and other funding sources like under expectation. Where you're talking about keeping a master list, you know, I don't know what other funding sources might be relevant there, but would certainly tell our story more effectively. But I I think I interrupted you, Eric.
Eric, got something. Yeah, so the identifying expand use of the C I Ps that was had completed a cross off item.
I I think that, again, is a recurring thing that'll go forward. Um, I think we have a good structure in place currently. Um. One thing that I would like to see us do, and I've already talked to the planning commission members about it, is get them more engaged early on in the process. Um, so they have some input. Um, we have a, we'll have a combined work session with this body, with planning commission. So everybody's hearing the same information at the same time, and and we can all address any questions that come up. So we're not constantly having things drug up.
My suggestion would be to make that the objective then.
Yes.
And then, you know, we're we're refining here by doing that.
Yep.
I think it's also starting earlier.
Yeah, we're going to put together a a budget calendar that I want your input on. Just to make sure that you are getting information in a in a way that you have enough time to process and provide input. I don't want to just hand over a binder to you and on a Wednesday and and ask you to take a position out of the following Mondays. That's just not fair to you. So we want to make sure that you're involved in the very early stages of how this, how the budgets are um, put together and get your priorities and and whether that's a Saturday morning work session where we just kind of work through it, you have we'll have presentations from department heads that'll talk about their respective departments and their needs and and what what they need to accomplish over the next year within the C I P. And so you can hear from them firsthand what they're asking for and start, when they start talking about a project, you go, yeah, I remember that or remember that work session. It's all kind of coming together now. And then obviously, planning commission members would be in the same room. They can hear the same thing.
I think that's great.
Yeah, because I have in the notes from our last session in September, that planning commission was feeling like they were not consulted and you, they were having to rubber stamp everything. So I think that, like, you taking that and what you just suggested kind of meets that that critique.
Yep.
We got what I said about action items and goals. Looks like we're just taking goals out of the language of this. Going to kind of call it actually, we're not, we're having objectives. We don't have goals.
Mm hmm.
Works. Yeah, with um, Mr. Mordeus mentioned the uh, let's see here, where am I? The grants and other funding, I I maybe think of the project where sports park with the roof or the ice rink has a ha- has grants, but is also this public private funding aspect. Um, I I just, I I know maybe we can get a grasp on what, um, I don't know if if a city policy on where of how we handle public private funding opportunities, when we presume, when we don't. I know, you know, too much of that would would get our daughter weary, our daughter's weary, but maybe there's more opportunities to do that for infrastructure, even the long term sustainable budget um, action items. I don't know where that would fit best, but I'd suggest for for the time being, keep it simple and keep it in infrastructure.
You all know I light up when you say policy.
That's an upcoming work session.
Should it be in the action plan?
Well, I think it kind of is under economic development. It says objective economic development incentive plan, if it easily be. I would see. Sorry, I went to the next page.
Good with that one? Any other comments? So we'll go to the next. Three. I had a note here for under the expectation, this is a first subjective of economic development. The R C redevelopment ready communities has a, uh, best has best practices. And the focus sites for development is is really just one of the six best practices. Not sure, so do we, this is a question, do we want to review some of those other best practices and those? I have, I wrote down a couple of them, zoning, development review and economic development and marketing. So maybe that's covered later. In other ways. I think the economic development is covered. I don't know if zoning zoning is something the planning commission is taking on. I don't know if that's something that used to be a city, a city or a council action plan or not.
Yeah. I have those same notes here, Derek, and I totally support that in that endeavor. That um, oh, I've seen best practices, zoning and economic development, marketing.
But it could be as simple for wordsmithing this is uh, um, the expectation, R R C economic development plan, you could just R R C best practices review.
So right here, under this.
No, I'm looking, starting to move to expectation. And that's very broad. I may take more wordsmithing, maybe more specific practices or.
And zoning is such a huge piece of that. Like, how do you make yourself more like um, open to development and and developers and changing a lot of our zoning is is so and stuff. And I I feel like we're making headway on that as well, but to have it as an actual um, what would you call that? A strategy or um, just laid out very clearly, that those R R C best practices and zoning are ways that you that you are, we are diversifying and strengthening the city's economic base. We're open for redevelopment. And we're looking at things like increasing height allowance in certain zones, for example, or consolidating zoning. Um.
Well, yeah, comparing some of the best practices you're doing is what are, all of those are doing what? Give me a sentence of what those things are doing of the heights of the, what are you, are we updating or we mo- modernizing our zoning? Because I mean, it's it's a, what you say is all, otherwise, we're going to be listing all of these things. And so I think we need to condense it into one sentence of what what is all of this stuff you want to do with the zoning. Updated, review and update.
Review and update uh, with in light of strengthen our economic economics.
To strengthen our economic vitality.
Yeah.
Uh. Period.
Well, though, what happens to some balance between that and the unique character of Petoskey? Like, I'm not seeing that anywhere in here, so.
And what I'm saying is not have anything to do with changing any of that, but to review. Uh, one main thing is, right now, we've got so many zones in this city that the the thing is so multicolored that we've run out of colors. I think if we broke into the zone now, we'd have to come up with a uh, invented color. So I think what's good is that's a a process that uh, enables residents as well as staff, especially to understand the process and be able to interpret and work with people.
Right.
So, you know, I think that would naturally fall right into it. I I I think that is covered. It doesn't mean we're going to go in and rewrite everything. It means that we're going to review and update.
Yeah, all I was trying to say was that in this document, I fully support economic development. It's a good thing. But I just don't see anything that addresses that in balance with the character of the community.
Well, you could take that sentence, you copy that sentence down.
Yeah, I just, I just, I said review and I said review and update zoning ordinances to strengthen and support economic development.
Well.
While maintaining the character and story.
The unique character. Of our, of the ci- of the city. How's that?
Thank you. That sounds great.
That guarantees what I know your point to, that guarantees what you guys I know are pointing to, so.
Yep, I got it. We're good.
Yeah, and uh, I may not, I've got a uh, Mr. Lindsay said especially that I'm developing an objective number three, we can cross off accomplished.
Yes.
Because we have that as is. I would love to have something I don't know the wording that says we're going to take advantage of our investment in N L E A. Like, learn to work with them, align with their
Collaborate.
Initiative, yeah.
A continued collaboration.
Yeah.
I think we're doing that now, though, but.
Making sure we're getting our money's worth?
Yeah. He's going to give us an update on how does what he does about ten thousand dollar investment actually come back to us.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's an expectation for me, and I don't know if that's too granular, but that we get updates to understand, you know, we're steward to this money.
I think it's totally reasonable.
Yeah.
Well, I I I think I suggested in September that as part of the N L E A piece and the great presentation they gave at their event months ago, they've got to focus on technology jobs, the blue economy or blue water economy and the craft beverage industries. And I feel that we should align some of our economic development efforts with those three rather than going off and trying to develop other businesses coming to our town.
Like there's some synergy with their goals as well.
Yes.
What what were those craft beverages? What were the other two?
Uh, blue water, blue water economy, the home of the blue economy.
What was the other one?
Uh, technology jobs.
Thank you.
Oh, we got hard to do there.
They're doing it. The I think the the Stefan's uh, Kane and his team and our chamber and others are having.
Yeah.
Let's 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 stop and make something up.
And so Shane, under objectives though, economic development incentive plan, are we really referencing a policy there or a plan? What was the thinking or anybody?
Um, that's just something that's come up multiple times. So I thought that was a objective to put something together. That gives a kind of a one stop shop, if you will, of when a developer comes in, this is our toolbox of incentive opportunities. This is what these mean on a broad view, and these are opportunities um, for you to potentially bring business, bring your development into the city. Not that we certainly don't want to be in a habit of giving, just giving our tax dollars away necessarily, but if we're able to accomplish a few of our action items by incentivizing a project, I think that's a a win win.
Then that's where you brought up Tina, thinking we need to have some kind of a structure rather than case by case management of how much incentive do we get? How much T F, how much benefit? Where do, where do we go? What's our borderline of no more or percent or whatever? I think I think that's really good, Shane. I think, I think we need to, I think there needs to be some real discussion on that. As much as you you talk about uh, ethics and policy, I think this economic incentive is so important right now because we do have projects coming and going. Are you willing to give up taxes on everything for thirty years? I mean, you know, are we going to say this is how much or we need to come up with some idea? But I think it's going to be very difficult, not going one on one, but uh.
I think for from my perspective, it should be a policy, and I think it can be crafted in a way that's not so specific, you know, but just sets up up categories that we're interested in seeing that elevated project. So for me, it would be a policy.
My my interpretation of of the plan was awes- was to set policy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you you, I wouldn't want to put us to box us in a corner, right?
Correct.
Because this development didn't meet, you know, box three, four, five. Oh, sorry, you're going to have to take that somewhere else. I I I want to give this body enough latitude to be able to think outside the box too. So I think that's important, but we talked about N L N L E A, I'm working with them on this. Um, I'm working with them. They're actually getting a group of us together to look at infrastructure. infrastructure, uh you know, in the county. It's this is not just a city of Petoskey issue, it's outside of our jurisdiction as well. So all of our all of the different jurisdictions have been involved in those discussions, so. I've gotten great support from NLEA to this point, and I certainly expect that to continue.
So. Are we ready to turn the page? I am.
Turn page.
Downtown developments.
Okay.
Are we talking about combined or was that involved with any of them?
The only thing I saw there, and again, it was just expand use of upper floor downtown residential uses that I thought could be under your workforce. Affordable housing image. But I mean, I understand some of those might not be affordable, so maybe it shouldn't get pulled out, but just seem like they make it simpler. Um, second floor units or commercial units, it's not, I mean, even though it's residential, they're commercial buildings. So. I think it's specifically that's a very downtown specific issue. So I've always affiliated that goal very much with what the downtown is capable of of working on.
And and what what is that? Again, can you rephrase? What is it that you feel that they shouldn't be working on?
Um, that like when you're talking about um expanding use of upper floor downtown residential uses.
Uh huh.
Like those are very much commercial buildings and they're also, even though there would be for residential use and that would be expanding upon housing and in downtown Petoskey, I feel like that goal should remain under the downtown just because they're residential and they're second floor buildings within the CBD district, like exclusively.
Mister Derek.
Thank you. I I had I was guess I was more of a lump not a splitter, so I had I had bumped some of those into the housing one and then some the uh like the big metro retail vacancies into economic development, but I I I see valid argument that Ms. Walker just made for keeping it as its own action item. And since it's more of an act item and not a goal now, I I guess that that's some for some reason that makes difference for supporting keeping it the way it is.
Mister Redner.
I uh.
Yeah, but I also think that it's put it around have that mix, you know. So it definitely needs to be in downtown because it's not viable unless we have.
Yeah.
Needs to be there if it's involved. That's fine.
Yeah, I don't have strong feelings about this either way, just trying to make it simpler, you know, that's all.
Yeah.
I got thinking about something like City Park, well, it feels like it belongs here.
In this in this area, yeah.
Yeah, I guess if if it makes it uh um Becky said there, if if we pulled it out and then the staff would maybe do that as council now. I we would want to dilute the projects that we do feels important in downtown, so I I'm it makes sense keeping it.
What do you think, Shane?
I like it. Keep I like to keep it right in that category. I think that makes makes sense from a focus standpoint.
Anything else over there?
Will be expanding the participation rate of voluntary fire code self inspection program. I don't know if um Chief Reed has extrapolated on that at all. If we've had any uh excuse me.
That's something that I just got to see very forward, but I don't I don't know if that's a huge point of emphasis for D M B to see that continued or expand on it, to make it more of a priority. Um.
Uh cooperating with we set up the locations and we publicized it, but it's still all volunteer. And I I'm sorry that I don't have any chat and upcoming people. We got more of this time. But again, I've lived through a fire a whole lot in the community. I don't ever want to see that here.
Becky, didn't we add that to you guys as well after the whole thing that happened a couple of times in Charlotte boy, just a few years back? Like when the fires happened downtown Charlotte boy? Do you remember that? Yeah, it wasn't that long ago. You wasn't remember? Bigger.
Sure.
We start with hundred percent compliance, voluntary compliance. So you should just keep it as an objective because until everybody's done the voluntary step and then that's like they go, right? So that we're one hundred percent safe.
Yeah.
And and the inspection chair. Well, yeah, one year you should go back there at least in the next three years.
And I've heard comment, I mean, some people would want it to be mandatory and that's not the feasibility of that's not necessarily.
So what have we done on that to kind of oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
What have we done on that to kind of enhance? Voluntary, I mean, did we have somebody?
I'm I'm not sure.
I don't know.
Door door to door.
Letters, I believe.
Several letters through my office. We promoted for them on our Facebook page. We explained it. We I answered questions of people who were very well, they find something they're going to make even in. Make a lot of education here, a lot more than we have, but without it being mandatory, it's not much more.
Right.
And the one question that I've had several times is, well, if it's not mandatory and the guy in extraordinary does nothing, then my building is in jeopardy.
Hmm.
That's what I've heard a few times.
I can see that too. You know, when we've had fires downtown, they've taken out more than one building or something. So I think.
Could there be some kind of um? Incentive with like the annual assessment? Downtown that like? I don't know. Like, could you, is there, is there a possibility of incentivizing that around the time that you're doing the downtown additional assessments? To pique someone's interest? I mean, it's the assessments are such a small amount really when you look over what the assess assessments are for business per year. Um, it doesn't feel like very much. And so I don't know of any kind of incentive to, hey, get your inspection done and then on your assessment, I don't know. I'm just trying to connect it to something that's.
Kind of sad that we have to pay them to be good. Especially when it's free, it's not like they have to pay for it.
Yes.
Does it shut kind of shut down a business if they had are inspected?
Yeah, not the inspection, I gotta do it, you know.
They just. They can't see something bad and go, oh dear, you're shut down.
Well, I guess they, I don't know.
I mean, I know they this was a free source for me at my house. I I don't know, like my house is fifty years old, forty years old. Don't want the inspector going in and saying, oh my, whoever did that forty years ago stood up and now you need to redo that, that, that. I I don't think I'd open up a can of worms for it, really.
Well, that's what emergencies.
Where I can see the hesitancy, yeah.
So I was I see where they're coming from, and I don't think paying them anything is going to make it happen unless you're paying with the cost of anything that's wrong.
But the problem is you have a common wall.
Right.
I understand.
Yeah.
It's also.
So not to get too deep in the weeds, but here I go. So should it be voluntary? I mean, I don't know if it risks an adjoining.
Are they allowed to do mandatory inspections?
That's the question I'd like to be.
I think that's.
Chief Reed. Has mentioned that other communities do this as mandatory button in the past. Now, don't. Vote me, but.
Well, let's check. Could be something like we do with facade work that we have a grant that if you need some assistance, you know, we've got this this opportunity that you can dive into, you know, some grant money to.
There are probably not to the degree of putting in a spirit or sprinkler system, but I will. Smoke alarms or. Problems could be once you get into accidents with electrical and they find out that it's going to be thirty twenty thousand dollars to correct the issues. Oh, are we going to assist on that?
No.
I don't know.
But there are there's always typically state resources that we can help uh a business owner try to try to get grants through M E D C or other opportunities.
And it helps improve our insurance insurability.
I think I ensure I think we are at the top of the level that we can be at now.
We.
No, we're.
I don't think we're quite there yet.
I don't I didn't think we could go higher because of the size of the uh of of our our rating. Our rating is as high as it can go due to not having uh I know we're right. I believe we're at the top for because we we went through this before. We can't be a five because you have to have.
A certain population.
And and everything else involved, you know, so far away, blah, blah, blah. We we are, I believe we're at four. And I don't think it's five as reachable as we went through this before a few years ago, and I think we were very content with where we're at because if there's a ceiling there for us.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. So one of the top of my mind, safety of all being is our number one priority in the city. Um. And another is that is you're referring to we who has the rating we is it every downtown?
The city. I believe the city gets a rating. Your house is under that rating. Everybody gets the same rating.
Yeah.
I so, yeah, I forgot what I associate.
I think that'd be one other comment.
That's cool, sorry.
So am I.
How this fits in, I've had three people, I've never met so many people coming to me at this time of year looking for new business locations. You know, where they don't want to rent. They have been inside the old, not every more building, very the star building right now has a lot of the cornerstone um and the water is gutting from the ceiling. It's not a bucket, it's not drenched. It's more like a truck. And because of the common walls, although that's only one common wall, but who is that building with the cornerstone? That means so much to a lot of people and I saw that is historic. It takes away from everyone else. So all the building inspections that we would it it's a more communal thing than um.
Mm hmm. I don't think that one place is going to take our number down. But what I do think we need to do is we probably need we need to somehow pursue that like we do. Uh, people violating rental rental really this city. Um.
Isn't isn't the tool and the mechanism for reporting that the international property code maintenance and any citizen can can file a complaint?
Yes.
The only is a yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
The the golden building.
Correct. So that means that international property code maintenance doesn't doesn't apply?
Do I file a complaint? I mean.
Yeah.
Anyone can.
Anyone.
That's what starts.
What's the address?
For you to do this.
Four thirty-three Mitchell, Cincinnati. Thank you. Everybody get on the city website. It's very easy to file it. International property code maintenance. It's very simple and you're going to call from Chief Reed within the next twenty-four hours.
Oh, excuse me.
I know, unless it's a social security. He's not going to answer unless it's a social security issue.
Then it's just safely.
If I understood, you weren't talking about the fire rating, you were talking about the condition of buildings and how they impact other buildings relevant to these types of things, right? Fire compliance, other types of building safety compliance because of the potential for to impact neighboring buildings. Okay. That's great.
Okay, there was that jumping on that. Uh, we have downtown commercial rental bases as an objective and then an expectation there's blight slash vacant building ordinances, which is great. I think it does kind of address that, but maybe the the blight aspect could be an objective as well uh where it uh address blight concerns in the downtown buildings.
Well, I think we're going to get some action in there also because with our hiring of a uh right in code inspector or officer.
But I think what are you, what you're saying, Derek, is maybe expand participation rate of voluntary fire code self inspection program and address blight or something.
Could be your second bullet. I I was suggesting another bullet, but it could be. I'm fine adding to that one too. Yep.
So that's kind of walk over from expectations over to its own objective.
Yeah, you're saying it. Correct, or some version of both if slash vacant building ordinance.
Oh, I see where it is. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see that.
Yeah, I think the order.
See that.
And since it would be an ex.
It's already it's on there though.
Yeah, it's on there.
It's on there as an expectation under downtown commercial retail vacancies, those.
Yep.
So we just leave it there.
He's saying to put it over as an objective. It however it gets done, that's fine. I just I'm highlighting it and um, yep, yeah.
So we're moving it over? Okay.
I'll leave the manager one.
Sounds good. Are we okay for this or is there more on this page? Dave drum roll, go to.
You can get some dinner.
Oh, well, I'm gonna go.
The sandwich.
All for you.
There's two vegetarians in the room. I'm good. Yeah, I'm good.
I'll eat anything.
I'm anxious.
Sustainability, maybe maybe. That's for the sake of time. Want to skip over sustainability because that's the longest one and maybe hit.
So they just. Let's go to the last one, regional transportation. Maybe we could wrap this up so we have five or ten minutes to just stand up and move along. So let's go to the last one. It's the simplest. It's the easiest. Is there anything you want to do with that?
Yeah.
Regional transportation authority.
Oh, yeah, that's that is an easy one.
I'm gonna cross it off.
Um, well, we're really not doing the research cost that is brought to us on feasibility and stuff as far as expectation. I don't think our staff should be spending their time. I realize it says Emma County Chamber, et cetera, but I don't see that is um the possibility that we the only thing that I see us really in the transportation business is the availability of a location or dropping off and picking up. Um, I think, you know, I think at times the Greyhound bus, I I would always hear about people having to drive out of town to get there. It's out. It's been bounced all over the place, but I think it was at the college and I think people up on Howard Street complained about people getting off the bus at night in the parking lot. But you know, I I feel down the road, if we're doing public transportation, we got to consider where 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 are they going to, where we're going to? What's the logistics for it? Big, big place for us to to locate stuff.
And it's also part of economic development when we're talking about regional transportation systems. So I I feel like there's people working on that and our role in that would be just like you had just mentioned, mayor, like where we bus stops go, where's the, you know, where's the population density such that people don't have access to transportation, like how you would cite those things, but in terms of an actual an action plan for a regional transportation authority, I just don't even think there's like the political will to even.
No.
Have those conversations, unfortunately. So I I would agree that maybe it it comes off of it or it's folded under an economic development strategy in conjunction with NLEA because they're working on regional transportation.
That might be a good place to put it.
I think that is, I think it's a really important issue, but we're really kind of collaborators in this space. So under economic development would be a good place to preserve like awareness of opportunities for collaboration.
Something, yeah.
As you said, sometimes you identify that as important.
An important element of that is that our whatever the percentage ended up being, the eldest population that are pretty invisible to us. Then one of their major needs is transportation, so. That are pretty invisible to us, that's one of their major needs is transportation, so I wouldn't wanna lose it completely.
I agree with that. Although if we've lost a page, it's massive, well, their city manager would expand up and applaud. Well, it's gonna be.
Actually, wanna replace it with another.
It's really important, but economic development is a good place to put it.
Okay. Do we want to know to, we've got workforce, workforce, housing initiatives, we wanna do this now, it's. It's part two.
And I can certainly keep this on our agenda going forward, so we can at least.
Tackle that.
This doesn't fall off. It'll be can continue to be in front of us as we go forward, cause I'd like to kind of get this.
I, can I just add one thing to this, I think once again, this, there should be policy here relative to these incentives, that's the only thing I wanna say that. Ish, again, a a broad ranging kind of guidance policy for people to look at. What our interests here, what we want to incentivize.
I'm sorry, are you to under, become a under economic development?
Housing initiatives.
Which really is falls under economic develop, which is falls in where you had already mentioned.
Yeah, I don't, until we start talking about this, I don't know how much. So there's other forms of economic development inside.
Yeah.
Housing, so I think there should be a policy for housing.
And Major, Major, can um, there's one. Can you ravel the action items one to, just put a number to those when you do another draft?
Or numbers or the actual objectives?
Excellent, I didn't. When we say goal one, is that, is that prioritized? In order, uh, no.
No, what you consider to be.
Yeah, there was no, it was just one, two, three.
Yeah, that's no problem.
It just, just real quickly, I'm all about sustainability, but this is all too much, I mean, it just needs to be consolidated and.
Do it later.
It's been like streamlined now.
So, we have, uh, you have thirteen. Before this council, I'm in this special session, I call this meeting adjourned.